Okay, great. Good afternoon and welcome to the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners meeting, January 25th, 2024. We're going to ask everybody on the dais to introduce themselves.
Rob Gierman, PC Specialist.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerau-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Alito, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President Alicia Reese. We always start our meetings with silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join us in silent prayer. Amen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse. Commissioner Summerau-Dumas.
Yes.
Awesome. Now we will go into presentations. Commissioner Dumas has a presentation regarding Inspire Initiative recipient, Bright Star Summer Camp, Pastor James Strayhorn.
Thank you. I thought it would be interesting for those that are watching on camera and those that are in the audience on camera and those that are in the audience that as we talk about Inspire and reaching out to grassroots groups that my plan is to have a group come in every month. Usually it'll be during my comments, so I won't interfere with presentations or anything, but we have a great group here today. And I'd like to introduce Robert Bell, who's kind of over the whole Inspiring, not kind of, you are, and Alice Bledsoe. Just come forward if you want to introduce the people that are here.
Thank you, thank you commissioners. This is really great. We're really excited about this program and we see, you know, we get the responses from it constantly and it's just doing good work. And I'm so proud that Hamilton County has really put in the effort with these community-based and grassroots groups and doing more and more with them. So I think we're breaking some barriers or anything like that that might be out there that keeps us from doing that. This is really good for Hamilton County, I think. But I want to, we're recognizing one of our recipients, Bright Star Community Church, for their 2023 Bright Star Summer Camp in Richmond program at the Bright Star Youth Center. And to do that, we have Pastor James R. Strayhorn and his son, Brian Strayhorn. And this is Alice Bledsoe. Let me introduce Alice. She runs the program. She's the head of this thing, too. And we love and appreciate your leadership on this.
And we really enjoy working with Bright Star Community Church and we would love for them to come on up there.
Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for allowing us to be in the meeting today. Alice called me and she said, well Pastor Strayhorn, we thank you guys for being recipients. I said, no, we thank you for supporting our efforts in the West End community of Cincinnati, Ohio. They supported our summer camp program with the grant. And I sent this packet, which you guys received. You should have that. Some of it's showing up on the board as well, on the screen. And today, we just wanted to come by and say thank you. We could have wrote a letter. We could have sent just the packet, but I thought it would be more personable to show up ourselves in person and say thank you. That's the best we can do right now. But here's the thing. You have changed the lives of over 70 kids in the West End of Cincinnati during our summer enrichment program. It's a program that ran the whole 10 weeks of the summer. And not only did they come to the summer camp, but we enriched them with academics, fun, and fitness. My son, Brian, is our camp director. He gonna tell you about the day-to-day stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. So as my dad Pastor Strayhorn was stating, Bright Star Summer Camp is one of the longest, largest, and most successful summer camps in the city of Cincinnati. So you guys were chosen to be a part of that. We've partnered with everyone from FC Cincinnati to also Police Department Fire Station. Just a little more personal history on the camp. I remember back in 2018, when I graduated from Cincinnati State, my dad came to me because I was looking for a summer job, and he said, hey, I got an opportunity to start a camp. What you want to do? I said, absolutely, because our grandfather, Pastor Willie L. Strayhorn, he ran camps in the city of Cincinnati for a very long time, and he helped a lot of young people. So I'm just fulfilling those footsteps, right, as the next generation of Strayhorns. So back in 2018, we just ran camp every single year, getting better and better. And I'm telling you guys, it's been one of the most fulfilling things I've ever done with my life. We've staffed up to, I think, 10 to 12 individuals, adults, every single summer. We also partner with Holigan International, which is one of the largest food incorporating summer programs in the city as well. So, you know, we're really running a ministry, but it's also a business, and it takes funds to do that. So I want to let you guys know, we've used your funds to incorporate day-to-day program, and we specialize in three things: fun, athletics, and academics. That's what I sell parents on. I can hang my hat that 100 kids every summer will get those three things. Number one, academics. So every single day, they're doing two hours of math and reading. We purchased curriculum called Summer Counts, which accommodates all the kids. Number two, athletics. So every single day, we're old school. Yeah, we got a little bit of the video games. Everybody want to play the game a little bit, but they gotta go outside, Mom and Dad. Your kid gonna go outside. So we go to the parks. We go to the pools. We take advantage of outside. And then number three is fun. So we took an old church in the West End and we converted it into a youth center, right? And we've been able to just service tons of kids and families throughout the program. I literally could stand here and talk for about another hour on success stories about our camp.
We don't have an hour.
We don't have an hour.
We don't have an hour.
But we got trophies.
A lot of people in here looking around. It's like, wait, I thought this meeting was gonna be short.
For sure, for sure. But I brag on the camp all the time. In my nine-to-five, I'm an educator, I'm an administrator at Don Community High School, but during the summer, I make it my goal to support the community of the West End and the city of Cincinnati with our babies in our church. So thank you.
And thank you so much. It's worth every minute of what you say, because as you've talked about, the impact on those young children, who knows where they would have been or may not even be alive because of this camp. So I'm sure that your words were taken into heart, and this is what this program is about. So I certainly appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you.
I'll open it up and see if our.
Yeah, as President, I'll open it up to Vice President Treehouse and then be happy to say something.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you to Commissioner Dumas for bringing this to our attention and bringing the initiative forward. I know you're here to thank us, but I think I want to thank you for what you're doing, because you are the ones on the ground doing the work, making sure that the kids benefit from the program and reaching into the community to provide a positive influence in that community. So I paged through what you provided. It looks like you've gone on a lot of really cool field trips.
Yes.
Maybe we should be invited to some of those? I don't know.
We'd love to have you to come. Come on, come on. You can come to the pool.
Yeah, you're on a lake. You're on a lake somewhere.
To the museum.
I'm like, wait a minute, where are we going?
Skating. We do it all.
Well, see, you're hitting all of us. You're going. So anyways, thanks again so much for what you do for doing this for the kids. Really appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you very much. This is the reason when Commissioner Dumas brought this forward, I supported it without hesitation, without question. And because this board is definitely committed to young people, not only this program, but we also put $3.9 million, and looking forward to hearing from those other programs. But they have been diversified because my belief is always, we've got to get our positive programs to the youth before the street program gets to them.
Yes.
A program's gonna get to them. And we are doing everything we can as a board, from a financial standpoint, to try to get programs like this and be able to support folks that's been out in the streets doing this with their own money for so long. So and after, you know, of course, that terrible shooting that happened in the West End. And I remember my grandmother lived at 1082 Lynn Street.
That's right down the street.
And that's where I was. That's right down the street.
You know it.
And we had to take the garbage out to an incinerator.
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't know it was an environmental situation.
Yes.
But we went down to the incinerators that take it down there, but to see that the shooting that took place there and then to look at us doing the best we can.
Yes.
To support programs like what you have, to get more youth involved. So thank you very much. And Commissioner Dumas, thanks for bringing them in today.
We thank you all. And we just brought a little of the hardware, just to show that.
Yeah, just a little hardware.
Just a few hardware pieces.
No bragging, but just a little, a little bit of hardware.
Just to show, yes.
To show it's a winning program.
Yes, a winning program. And we have been a top performance program for the last seven years in a row in the city of Cincinnati. And you know, in the West End, as you just said, President, Commissioner, in the West End, we get a lot of bad press, but there's a lot of great things happening in the West End. And we're gonna start pushing that up to the front more often and inviting the news to come and see what we're doing in a positive light in the West End as well. So we thank you for your time, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you. Now, you're welcome to stay. We have very exciting meetings. We want everybody to, you know, we want everybody to get excited about what we're doing. But if you have to go, we understand. If you want to leave some of the hardware, we'll, we have, we got a case out there. We'd love to have it. But you need a case. Oh, that's the next, that's the next grant. Well, thank you all so, if you, if you have to go, we understand. So thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, now, back to our agenda here. Next, we have public comments. Is there anyone on Zoom? No one's on Zoom. Okay. We have one public comment. Pat Holbrook. Did I say that right? Is it Holbrook or Hol...?
Holbrook.
Holbrook. I got it right this time. Okay. Welcome. You have two minutes.
I'm, of course, here for a Spring Oak Drive local sewer petition. The Ohio Revised Code, Section 611706, and MSD Rules and Regulations, Section 1805, C8, provide the criteria to be met for proceeding with the construction of the local sewer. These criteria do not include any majority rule requirement, or do they provide for any repeal or any measure criteria that could be used to assess the results of a repeal. The absolute majority is the voting basis that validates the citizen petition. It cannot be altered to a new standard without due process. The 61% majority validated the Spring Oak Drive petition, so it remains by law the controlling document and cannot be replaced or reconsidered by a repeal. The repeal is intrinsically flawed, and it has no relevance to the original petition because it encompasses a different set of homeowners. It allows new homeowners who purchase their home at a reduced price due to the pending sewer petition, the opportunity to vote against the petition. It allows new homeowners who purchase their home at a reduced price due to the pending sewer petition, the opportunity to vote against the petition. It allows a second vote opportunity to some citizens, but not to every citizen that is, that, but not to every petition that is received. It is only by applying ORC Section 611707 as standalone law, totally out of context, while completely disregarding the preceding provisions of ORC Section 611706, that the assumption has been made that the commissioners may use whatever criteria they wish. All validated citizen petitions allow for upfront appropriation of funds for planning and design of the local sewer. The deviation from established laws and regulations to a discretionary form of county government in regard to sewer petitions results in the total waste of those design funds and in the untenable squandering of Hamlin County taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next, we got two that have come on Zoom. Debbie Cordray, you have two minutes.
Hi, can you hear me? Just checking.
Yes.
You can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. I appreciate everything Pat had to say. She is my neighbor, thank you very much, Pat. I understand where your point of view is coming from. However, many, many homeowners have switched. We're, most of us new within the last three to five years. And we do not want this sewer line to go in because it is cost prohibitive. Simply put, it's going to cost every homeowner between $35,000 and $45,000 to tap into this new sewer line. That is on top of the $12,000 that we have to pay with interest over the next 20 years through our property taxes. It is simply too much money. I don't have $40,000, $30,000 to tap into a sewer line. And that does not include any damage to my property with regards to fencing or driveways or sidewalks or landscape repair or any of that. Plus, I live downhill from this, which means I'm going to need a pump. And Robert Jones Plumbing has told me that it's going to be about $8,000 for a pump to pump my sewer uphill, my sewage uphill. This is simply too much money. We have a working septic system and we do not need to replace it. Our neighbors down the street have a brand new working septic system and they all, they still owe $10,000 and they're paying on that. And they're going to be forced to tap into this new system. It is cost prohibitive and we ask that we, our new votes, regardless of what was done before we moved here, be considered. And we do not want this sewer to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Joanne. Two minutes. Got a card here going once.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Good afternoon. I was able to join in person last week. I am calling today to report that since that time, I've had to endure very unpleasant and disturbing events. Specifically on a black radio station yesterday, my name was mentioned and most of the show was about me. The radio personality is a member of the Black Music Walk of Fame Committee run by Alicia Reese. And because I'd made a private request for public details, I was attacked over a three hour period on his show. The radio host went into details of how this structured the Black Music Walk of Fame is privately owned and Alicia raises money to pay for it. I'm very confused by his statements. My name and my family was publicly bullied for activating my right as a citizen for information. I'd like to know how a non-county employee was provided my name and the details of my request to share publicly with his listeners and then shame me for doing so and invite others to join him in virtual bullying on, bullying on yesterday. I feel my personal safety has been compromised. I confirmed with the county clerk's office today that no public request for my submission to the clerk's office was received. It was explained to me that my request was only shared with the commissioners. Therefore, it is evident that considering the source of my battery in public, my information was show, was shared by someone with access at the county. There were other accusations and recall of events mentioned about my visit last week to the county commissioners' meeting that were untrue. Again, the radio host was not in attendance, so this assessment was also obviously provided to him to use as content to spew hate publicly against me and others. As a homeowner and taxpayer with rising costs, homelessness, violence, and other local issues that require attention, I'm disappointed in the misuse of time, power, and access as well misrepresentation that was initiated against me personally. I feel that I am being bullied and falsely accused to create a smokescreen and to avoid transparency.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, you have your time. All our meetings are on YouTube and public, so everything is public down here. Now we'll move to.
Not everything. For instance, requests for records is not public.
Any email that comes out is public.
It's not, it's not.
It's unused.
Right here, though. You were saying everything that we do is.
I mean, we were mentioning coming down and speaking is public.
Well, I was, I was mentioning about the record request is not.
Yeah. Okay. All emails are mostly public, so. But anyway, moving on. Moving on. Let's go to, we're gonna go with our public comments. So I'd like to start off my public comments. First, let me say that there are very big important issues that are happening in our county. And I want to be very clear in terms of my opponent, in my mind. My only opponent is the system. A county system for over 100 years prior to all of us being here, which has left a lot of people behind. My focus now, and I want to be real clear because I know there's things that will, will come as distractions. But I will not be distracted. The vote on the presidency is over. We're moving forward. And more importantly, many people are being hit by high property taxes. Property taxes, people are out here right now, want to know, are they gonna lose their home? You want to know, are they going to lose their home? We had people come and testify last week about losing their home. We have emails that have come in. And I have read those publicly. Emails have come in and I've read them publicly because they're public records of people who are afraid of losing their homes because the taxes in some cases have doubled. And so my focus right now is to try to see what can we do to help them. Now, I did introduce legislation, I knew that this was coming. And I believe that we missed out on an opportunity for the 30%. I still feel that way. I also feel that we have levies that we must look at. We did, when we do levies, we say because there's a state of emergency and a very great need. But not intentionally, but unintentionally, we have over 100 plus million dollar fund without any necessary, necessary needs. Now, that fund is in our Children's Services Levy. Now, my position is that we still can do new programs, we still can do preventative programs. But then maybe 30 million of it out of 100, we could go and try to give a tax break to the homeowners. And the 70 million would still be there to be able to do and handle all the things that we need to do and also some new things that we need to do. So with that, I'm still going to be pushing in that regard. In the meantime, though, people need help right now. And I want to put up, here are some possible resources that can help you right now. Because they have until, I believe, February the 4th to pay the taxes. This board, we put together a $5 million fund a couple of years ago with ARPA money. One of the things that I really pushed for and thankful that it did pass unanimously. In that fund, we have a little less than a million dollars left. It's to help people with back property taxes, people with, with back property taxes, but also help people if they had some mortgage issues. We do have some money still left there, there are federal guidelines. And I think the number is being, you can't really see the number, I don't know how we can get it where they can see that phone number that it's watching. Because I don't have it in front of me. Can we do it, minimize it or anything? You can go to 513relief.org, 513relief.org online. But we also have a phone number, as you can see, thank you, 513-946-1000. And you can hit option one. So we do have some funds left, there is some guidelines, but you can try to try there. Next week, we have legal aid. They came and testified last week. And that's their phone number and they said to ask for Ms. Sharon Adams. They're trying to work diligently with a lot of homeowners. If you disagree with your property evaluations, because these evaluations were done in a way that was, these evaluations were done and a lot of times, they just, they had a different way of doing it. And this is mandated by the state of Ohio, not Hamilton County. And I know that Representative Donnie Ising, he's got a bill he's trying to work. So you can go to the Board of Revision site and say that you want to challenge your property evaluation. Because they don't take into effect if, you know, your roof needs to be fixed or something that's costing you that's not there, your garage ain't working or whatever. They don't take that, they take what is the market rate, which we know the market is overpaying for houses. And then they put it on you based on the market rate is what the state system, I believe, how they do it. So here's a phone number that you can call and get more information if you want to challenge your property assessment, which has impacted also your property taxes. So I wanted to get those, I know people are frantic right now trying to find, where do I go, what can I do, who can help me? These are some resources that can, that can help you, you can take that down. But this property tax piece, and I've asked the administrators, is there anything else? If we've got some extra ARPA dollars, I wouldn't mind us taking a look at if that can help people. But this is serious business. Yes, the state mandates the six-year assessment is done by the state. At the same time, though, we, as a county, we don't want to be a county that prices you out of Hamilton County. And we have been very active in affordability. And one of the things is affordability, affordable housing is not just, we're gonna do some new projects and get some people into affordable housing. At the same time, I believe it's a responsibility to make sure people don't lose the house they already have. And, and make sure that they're able to hold on to their house and that Hamilton County is not pricing you out of the marketplace. So those are some resources I wanted to include and have up there. And I'm looking for if there's any other resources or opportunities, I'm interested in that as well with ARPA. There may be ARPA funds. I also have looked, asked the administrator to look into the AARP program, which I think is important. There's that as well, which I think is, is critical. In addition to announcements, just want to remind everybody that on February the 6th is the State of the County. And invite people to come to the State of the County, it's gonna happen at Memorial Hall. And it's going to be, it's gonna be at Memorial Hall and it's gonna be at 5:30 with the reception followed by the State of the County. So that's very important. And then also, the last day for those who want to participate in voting, and I encourage everybody to, the last day to register for the primary, which will take place, the primary is on March 19th. Last day to register would be February the 20th, February 20th. If you haven't registered or you need to make sure that your registration matches where you, where you live, if you've moved. February 20th is the last day to, to register and fix all of that. And then early voting begins on February the 21st. I believe those may be. I've got a lot of meetings that I participated in this week. And, but more importantly, want to make sure everybody comes to the state, have the State of the County. They've got the information as it relates to where you can go and possibly get some help with this property tax issue. And so I wanted to say that on next Tuesday, I'm hoping to have someone in here to talk about the Board of Revision process, how do people access it as well. And we look forward to just continuing to get the information out.
Okay, I open up Vice President Drew House.
Thank you. I have a question actually before I get to my comments. When you refer to the 30% rebate, you're referring to the stadium sales tax.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, not, not property tax as we collect it in the, in our overall fund. You're, yeah, I, I had, someone asked me a question about this and I said, I feel confident you're referring to the stadium.
I'm referring to the proposal that I put forward that we would keep the promise, which would have resulted in people getting a 30% reduction.
Yes, so that related to the sales tax. We, we did the 12%, I believe it was, as opposed to the 30%, but I just want to clarify that point.
Yes.
All right, so a couple of things, two things, two pretty big things kicked off yesterday in Hamilton County. One was the Pay Equity Learning Series, which is a product of an initiative from the Commission on Women and Girls related to pay equity. We've had people for a couple of years now get together and sign that they are committing to pay equity in Hamilton County. And some organizations said, we, we want to do this, but we're not sure how to achieve pay equity. We're not sure how to evaluate pay equity. We, we want to be honest about signing, we need some help in order to do that. So the Commission on Women and Girls under the leadership of Mary Mauney and Eloquate and the Women's Fund all collectively got together and said, we are going to launch a pay equity learning series so that organizations, whether they're for-profit, nonprofit, or government agencies, can learn about some strategies about how to achieve pay equity. So that started yesterday and I think it's a few week process. But we had a very large response to that and thank you to all the organizations that are participating. The second thing is there was an, there's an ODA summit going on in Hamilton County right now. It's over at the Summit Hotel. And the Quick Response Team under HCRK, the Addiction Response Coalition, is being recognized as a national model to try to connect people with treatment that are suffering from addiction. And so we are the origin of the Quick Response Team. It started in Colrain Township before any of us were here. We expanded it to Norwood and now it is countywide. And it is being implemented as a model throughout the state and throughout the country. And so at this conference, Megan Guthrie, Lisa Webb, and Abby Frisch were highlighted as, you know, perpetuating this model throughout the county. And there were hundreds of people from all over the country at this symposium, learning about what we are doing in Hamilton County related to addiction and some of our strategies. So I did want to give them a big shout out. It was really well attended and they did a really nice job. They're also talking about how the distribution of the One Ohio funds is going, which is slower than any of us want it to be going. But anyway, we were talking with others about how that's going in other parts of the state. And then lastly, I wanted to shout out the African American Chamber. Eric Kearney is the president and CEO of the Chamber and does a great job with his team. They had their annual event last week and I was able to attend that event and, you know, meet with, gosh, over 100 people. know, meet with, uh, gosh, over 100 people there, talking about, um, minority, um, enterprises throughout the county. So congratulations to that organization for continued success. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple of things, and then I have a couple of questions for Jeff. I attended the weekly White House briefing every week that I do. Nothing really outstanding. There's lots of monies coming out, uh, through the White House for everything from affordable housing, um, to homeless, homelessness, and how to pursue that. And also, as we know, uh, the governor, uh, made a mandate that we try to place our young people into facilities that are smaller and that are closer to home, which is exactly what we're doing with Hillcrest. Um, and so we're on our way to doing that, and we need to do it more often. Um, met with Trina Jackson yesterday, uh, before, um, she came, I actually met with her on Tuesday before she came in for the meeting to talk about the RISE Initiative. I won't say anymore about that, but it's, uh, moving right along. And I have, uh, my administrative assistant, Kimberly Lee, is attending. I had attended the third annual, uh, QRT, um, conference, which Commissioner Dreehouse had spoken about. And also, once again, I want to thank Reverend James Strahan for the Inspire Initiative Spotlight, and I'll be doing that every, every month. Um, I want to, um, you know, this 30% rebate, I keep getting questions asked and emails, and people are thinking if we had passed, uh, the 30%, uh, that your, uh, property tax would go down 30% of what you have to pay, or even an assessment they thought would go down 30%. And that's not true. So when we, when we talk about 30%, this is such a, a volatile issue as it relates to people keeping their homes or not keeping their homes. We have to tell the whole truth, because it's, people are out there just frantic, where am I going to stay? How I'm going to maintain my housing? And so I'm going to ask Jeff if you can just clarify for us. Uh, Commissioner Dream, Dreehouse brought it up a little bit, it's related to the sales tax. But if you could clarify, we keep hearing about the 30%, if we had done, uh, passed the 30%, what is exactly that talking about?
So if I'm hearing the question correctly, the 30%, we're talking about the property tax rebate that the board, um, uh, decides on every year. So the, the 30%, whatever percent we're talking about, 30% or this past year, I think the board did, uh, 12 and 1/2% or 12.4% refers to the amount of the sales tax proceeds that we get in that are applied towards property tax relief. So, um, yes, it, it does not refer to a nominal reduction in property taxes. It refers to the amount of our sales tax proceeds that we are using to go towards property tax relief.
So let's give an example, if you can use real numbers that people can relate to. We did a 12.5%.
Yeah, we did it, we did a 12.5%. So without having the actual numbers from the auditor's office in front of me, um, although we did, um, we reviewed this with the Budget Office at the, at the close of the year, I think the, the, if I'm remembering correctly, the total, uh, dollar, the valuation of someone's property tax bill that, um, would be reduced is some, for a full 30% reduction is somewhere around 3.5%. The evaluate, the valuation associated with what the board did at the 12.5% relates somewhere around one and a, is somewhere around 1 and 1/2%. So that's how you would translate the 30% sales tax proceeds into a reduction in someone's bill. If that makes, if I'm.
It makes sense. I just wanted to make sure the people who are watching know that it would not have reduced your bill by 30%.
Right, and I, and I think as we presented this back, and I think the board is aware of that, when we presented that during the, the PTR discussion as well. So I think we, we talked about this, um, um, pretty directly in terms of what it would mean for a $100,000 home, that type of thing, so, yeah.
But you would get more off than you're getting off now.
Yeah, so the, the difference between, uh, 30%, and again, this relates to maybe a $100,000 home, uh, the difference between the 30% and the 12 and 1/2% was, I think, on an annual basis, like sixty, between $60, $70, something like that.
Okay, and so I had a second question. Um, I just wanted to mention that the whole, our entire board is looking at the travesty of how these bills have gone up. I've been affected, I don't know who else on our DS has been affected. Um, so many people have been impacted by the increase. So just wanted to let the public know that the entire board is looking at options, uh, as it relates to how can we relieve everyone? I mean, mortgage relief is top on our list, and so we, I, I can only speak for myself. I've gone to Jeff to look at options that can happen for our residents. We're not just forgetting about you and the fact that the state decided how much it was going to be. Well, we can say that, and we know that, but what do we do as a county government to try to relieve some of our residents of this burden? And so, um, that's what I'm looking at, and I believe all our, all my colleagues are looking at that also. Um, and lastly, Jeff, I wanted to ask you, and I think I've asked this before, it comes up about the Children's Services Levy, uh, Services Levy and taking money out of the levy. So can you explain for me, uh, what the purpose of the Children's Services Levy is and our ability to use it for other things and what it was designated for? Is, is there a possibility to do that?
So the Children's Services Levy is, uh, as was approved at the, at the ballot, um, is a levy that raises dollars, uh, for the support and care of abused, neglected and dependent children, uh, in Hamilton County. That is, the, the purpose funds, um, everything from, uh, trauma-informed care for, for children, kinship care programming, um, uh, uh, as children age out of the system, there's dollars. And there recently, we've started using it for some preventative, uh, services as well. Um, I'm sure Michael Patton could give a, a, a full presentation on, uh, the use of the Children's Services Levy if that was desired. In terms of what we, in terms of whether there is the authority for the board to use it for other things, if that was the question, Commissioner, um, we, we do not have the, the ability to use those dollars for other purposes. Um, I think what has been discussed amongst the board is whether or not, uh, there is the ability to do, uh, something, whether it's through the, the Budget Commission or through the Tax Liberty Review Committee, uh, to provide some sort of rebate with balance funds. And that is something that could be considered by the board in the TLRC process, but just flat out using those dollars for other purposes, um, that's not something that we, we could do legally.
Thank you. Um, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're moving to the calendar. Um, okay, engineer, Mr. Engineer.
Thank you, Commissioners. Todd Long, Chief Deputy Engineer. Today, I'd like to do something a little bit different and introduce Jake Verst from our office. He's an engineer, and he's going to be walking you through our item today, if you allow. Appreciate that.
Hi. I don't think I've had the privilege of meeting you all, but like Todd said, my name is Jake Verst. I've been here for almost three years now, so this is my first time coming down to a meeting, so thank you for having me. So our item today, um, this item is for resolution awarding the construction bid for Project 502308, which is a storm sewer improvement project on, at the intersection of Corbett and Winton Road. This, uh, resolution is to enter into a contract with the lowest bidder, KT Holden Construction. This project is located in Springfield Township. The bids were open December of, uh, excuse me, December 28th. We had an engineer's estimate of $99,000 on the job, and the bid award totaled, our lowest bid was $75,369.75. So the funding for this project is going to be 100% from our Permissive Auto Tax Fund, and we are hoping that the construction will be complete by May of 24th. So, any questions?
I'll open it up. Vice President Dreehouse.
No questions.
Commissioner, Commissioner Dumas.
Yes, your auto funds, what's the balance in there now?
The total balance in the, in the, uh, in the fund? I don't know that number off the top of my head, but I'd be happy to get that, uh, number to you.
I appreciate it.
Certainly.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Oh, not thank you. I make a motion to approve item number one.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, now you can leave. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Aludo, we have.
Thank you, Commissioners. Yeah, our next two items are related to the Tax Liberty Review Committee and Levy, uh, Consultant, uh, the appointment of consultants to assist with levy reviews for the Family Services and Treatment and Developmental Disability Services levies. And Assistant Administrator Lisa Webb is here to walk us through both of those.
Thank you. Um, item number two is a resolution for a contract with Public Consulting Group for the Family Services and Treatment Levy Review. The amount of that contract is $127,298. Um, and then item number three is the consulting agreement for Health Management Associates for the Developmental Disability Services Levy, and the amount of $125,830. Both of those consultants are agencies that we have used in the past, uh, for previous levy reviews. Any questions?
I'll open it up. Vice President.
So these are the two levies that are on the ballot?
Yes, correct. They are the two levies that are on the ballot for this year. Additionally, the Children's Services Levy is undergoing their midterm review. Um, the consultants are ready to get started. In fact, uh, the review of the Family Services and Treatment Levy, agencies will be coming in for their initial meeting next Monday, um, to the Board of Elections, the Tax Liberty Review Committee. Uh, we have our meeting scheduled for 6:00 PM that evening.
Okay, so when do you expect we'll get, um, a recommendation?
Recommendations should be brought to the Commissioners, uh, by the end of June, uh, for presentation at a future staff meeting.
Is that relative to these two and the Children's Services?
Yes, we will, typically, our midterm, we do later in the year, um, but given issues and conversation around the Children's Services Levy, the plan is to have all three of those reviews happen, these two with consultants. A midpoint, we do not have a consultant for. We have a Tax Levy Committee Subcommittee, take a look at that and meet with the agencies and prepare their report. But all three are on track to be presented at the end of June.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas.
No questions.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve items one and two.
Two and three.
I mean, two and three.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And next we've got MSD. Good afternoon.
Lauren DiGarcia for MSD. Uh, we have three items on the agenda this afternoon. I have Chelsea Thomas with me today, as well as Matt Spadari, um, project managers on these, uh, two of the items we have today. So if you have any questions, they can assist with those. Um, item four is resolutions to take a number of legislative actions necessary to proceed with the construction of the Spring Oak Drive Local Sewer Assessment Project. This project will benefit 17 parcels total, 16 single-family parcels, and one residential vacant parcel by providing available public sewer service and facilitating the elimination of 16 existing household sewage treatment systems that currently serve the area. Uh, a portion of the project costs will be assessed to the benefited property owners in accordance with MSD rules and regulations, and the amount will not exceed $12,000 per parcel. Uh, no new appropriation of funds is requested with this legislation today. Uh, if the board determines to proceed with the construction of this project, Ohio law allows for a 10-day period for any appeal to be brought by a benefited property owner. Um, and after this time elapses, without an appeal, or if an appeal concludes in the favor of the project, MSD will request the appropriation of construction funds, which, based on the current estimate, we anticipate requesting $1,276,276 for construction. Item five is legislation to approve and fund construction of the Overlook Avenue near Glenway Avenue Sewer Replacement Project. This project will rehabilitate approximately 1,475 feet of sewer that has exceeded its useful life and is in poor condition. Uh, we are requesting the appropriation of $338,000. This project is included in the approved 2024 CIP, and the amount requested is less than indicated in the approved CIP. Recommend approval. Item six is legislation to authorize applications to and agreements with the Ohio EPA and the Ohio Water Development Authority, or OWDA, uh, for financial assistance, specifically low-interest loans, uh, through the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, or WPLF, which is Ohio's state revolving loan fund for wastewater infrastructure improvements, as well as storm water. We prepared this legislation annually for the board's consideration, and for 2024, MSD has nominated 13 capital projects to be included in WPLF's 2024 program year. Uh, they've all been preliminarily approved, pending, uh, completion of the formal application process and execution of a loan agreement for each of the projects. And this legislation will allow us to move forward with that process. Uh, the total estimated amount of financing for all 13 projects is approximately $301 million, which, again, would be provided through loans with discounted interest rates. So we recommend approval and can take any questions on these three items.
Thank you. I'll open it up. Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation on all three items. Um, the Spring Oak Drive item, we have had some conversation about, and, um, we had some public comment related to this item. I wanted to get some clarity. I, I know we went out for a repolling on this project. Um, it reminds me, the first time this was polled, it was positive to move forward with the project, and the second time it was polled, it was also positive to move forward with the project, correct?
So, uh, the initial petition had 61% support, um, and that's when the board decided to authorize design and we moved forward with the project. Uh, when we repolled after the public hearing, it came back with a 50-50 split. However, since the time that we reported those results, two of the parcels, a, um, a property with a home on it, and then the abutting vacant parcel, just their yard, were consolidated. So that changed the percentages a bit, um, and it is now 53%.
Okay, so positive and positive.
Correct.
So, um, I'm inclined to support this. I would like to get some clarity, though, on the idea of whether or not this board has the authority to repoll, uh, because that, I remember thinking through that when we had a meeting, I don't know how long ago it was, related to, um, the timeframe that passed between the original poll and now, uh, because it was a significant period of time, I think it was like four years or something like that. And so, um, you know, this board said, well, we want to make sure that the project is still supported by the current property owners. I can see how that's problematic, once MSD kind of starts down the road of designing something, because there was a positive poll result. And so I'm going to ask the Prosecutor's Office if we can get some clarity on that, because I, as a board member, um, I don't want to spend your time or spend our time, uh, conducting a repoll of something if we don't have the authority to do that. Uh, so I, I just, we, we didn't, I don't think we really delved into that the first time out, um, but I would like, because this may come up in the future, I would like to get a more definitive answer on that. I, I know we did it, and I thank you for that, um, because it was helpful to get a little bit of clarity. But I, I think, I mean, I personally would like a more definitive response as to whether or not that this board has the authority to do that.
Commissioner, we're happy to do that, and we'll work with the Solicitor's Office.
Thanks, appreciate that. Thanks.
Okay. Commissioner, uh, Dumas, any questions?
Yes, and I'm just wondering, should we move forward? Because it was so close, the poll was so close. I know we repolled because half of the residents that were there were new. Um, and so, um, it's just a hard, um, it's just a hard one to know. You said 53%, right?
Right, correct.
Okay. And so, I mean, this is a major deal if we approve it. And so I'm wondering, should we check out the repolling, uh, authority before we do? Um, I mean, that's what I'm wondering. I know we could have said it before, and we're ready to pass it, but this, this is a major decision that we're going to, to make, and if it does move forward, I'll just have to abstain on it.
Uh, Vice President Dreehouse, you were about to say something?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Aludo.
Just to make sure we're clear, so the, uh, in terms of waiting on, on the, on the Prosecutor's advice on, on repolling, I think, as Lauren had said, the, the initial poll was positive, the second poll, as, um, as refined, I guess, by some property consolidation, was positive as well. Um, Lauren, can you, again, just, the, the rules and regulations currently states, it, the, according to the rules and regs passed by the board, it's 50% plus one, essentially, is it, is it not?
Correct. And that's speaking to the initial petition, and of course defer to the Prosecutor's Office on their legal opinion, but our reading of it is, is that applies to the initial petition only. So our view of this repolling is strictly for the board's information, almost in place of a public hearing. You know, maybe not everybody showed up. We know not everybody showed up. So to provide the board with that information, engage public support, um, currently as it stands today, in order to inform your decision. So we don't find it to be definitive. I mean, we wouldn't be here with legislation for you to approve if that was the end-all, be-all decision maker.
Right, so from, from having requested the more definitive, uh... Right, so from having requested the more definitive decision from the prosecutor's office, I don't, I don't see that playing into the decision today. We've got a decision before us today relative to that initial poll that was over 60% positive. So I am prepared to support item number four, but in addition to that, at a future date, you know, have this other decision come forward.
Understood.
Yeah, I was very supportive of doing the repoll initially, and we did that, you did that, now you're back. Is there an appeal process that, once we pass that, do they have?
There is an appeal process, and that's set forth under Chapter 6117 of the Ohio Revised Code, the process for that.
Okay, so they can appeal.
Yes, and those who filed written objections, we did send them the required legal notice advising them of that and advising them that this resolution would be considered today, so we've taken care of all of that.
Okay. For me, that's, I'm ready to move forward because there is an appeal process that is available. So I'll make a motion to approve item number four.
I'll do four, five, and six.
I think, I think Commissioner Dumas.
I'm okay, since there's an appeal process.
Okay, well, then I'll make a motion then to approve four, five, and six.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we go to the consent agenda. Mr. Ludo.
Thank you, Commissioners. Actually, I do not think we did the by leave agenda, so.
Oh, we didn't.
Don't mind, I will proceed.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ludo. Let's go to by leave.
That is, that is okay. I'll proceed first through the by leave agenda and then into the consent agenda, if that's okay?
Yes.
So let's see, and actually, the first by leave item is a board appointment. I'm happy to read it, but Commissioner, I didn't know.
I'll present it. By leave number one is a resolution appointing a member to the Hamilton County Family Services Planning Committee, Leah Snyder. I'll open it up if there's any comments or questions.
No comments, just want to thank Leah Snyder for her service.
Commissioner Dumas.
No comments.
I make a motion to approve by leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leave number two is Resolution P021-24. This is an award of RFQ 103-23, an execution of an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and THP Limited. This is for structural engineering services for stadia and parking. We split this up. We do an RFQ for general county facilities work. We also do it for stadia and parking work as well. This was bid last year, I believe there were two bids for this service. The recommendation from the panel was for THP for a term of three years with two alternate years at the discretion of the board. The administration recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make one comment on here, and I'm supportive of moving forward, but I do want to state again on the record, we have entities on the banks and the stadium. It's very important, the first building of the stadium, we had, I think, almost zero, very little inclusion on the project, and certainly we weren't here, so that's on the group, but now we are here, and I want to make sure that we are intentional and inclusive. I know that there were some other architectural groups that, and it may not apply to this particular contract, but who have said they felt left out and not a part of it. So just wanted to reiterate again, I think, Mr. Ludo, some things you said you're working on, but I just wanted to make sure that, be on the record, that we want to be intentional as it relates to total inclusion.
Commissioner, if I could just quickly, I think the, there were two bidders on this particular project, just for, it's in the resolution, so I don't, I'm not saying anything that is, should be disclosed or that shouldn't be disclosed. They were THP, the recommended, and KZF Design were the two, were the only two bidders on this particular project.
Okay, thank you. And THP, I mean, they've done great work. I just wanted to reiterate those other, I think you have some other plans to also have inclusion in other areas.
Yes.
Okay. I'll open it up, Vice President Treehouse.
No questions.
Commissioner Dumas.
Not to belabor it, but Jeff, I was wondering, there are lots of agreements that say there are two, two-year renewals. How is that process done where we evaluate whether or not we want to continue the agreement? We also do that with JFFAS, I really had a concern with that, and how, you know, how do we evaluate that they would have another agreement in two years?
Yeah, no, it's a good question, Commissioner. I think this, in this particular case, it's three years with two one-year renewals on it.
One year, okay.
But we typically look at the market environment for the, for the particular consultants that we're, that we're looking to procure. We look at the ongoing work, if there, if we are right in the middle of something, that it would make sense to continue. We look at the performance of the particular vendor. We consolidate, and other policy factors of the board as well. For instance, we've had discussions with the board in the past on whether it's inclusion, whether it's the idea of breaking things up, where from time to time, we have said, you know what, we have the option for another renewal, but maybe in this particular case, we just go back out for a procurement. So it's a lot of those issues consolidated.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Who actually does that, though, Jeff?
It'd be. It's primarily, primarily led by the departmental staff. So in this particular case, it would be Joe Feldkamp's group down at Stadium Parking.
Okay.
Who would, who would ultimately make that recommendation to the administration and ultimately to the board on whether or not we pull the trigger on a renewal or go back out to bid.
Very good, thank you. That's all I have.
I make a motion to approve by leave number two.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm going to ask Lisa Webb to come back to the podium to talk us through two by leaves associated with the Health and Hospitalization Tax Levy as well as an MOU between some of the entities under that tax levy and the Sheriff's Office. Lisa?
Thank you. Commissioners, what you have before you, by leave number three, is the agreement for the Health and Hospitalization Indigent Care Levy related to the hospitals and their providing of medical services for uninsured and underinsured Hamilton County residents through the University of Cincinnati Medical Center. That contract per the levy plan is $17,640,000 in uncompensated care to Hamilton, again, to Hamilton County residents between the University of Cincinnati Medical Center and Children's Hospital. The total of that contract for the five-year period, which actually began in 2023, amounts to $88,200,000 in medical care for our residents. It's a big number. The county staff has been working on this over the past year. We approved two interim agreements during 2023, so services could continue while this was being negotiated. The goal of that was to make sure, due to some changes in the state law, that the hospitals could continue to use the levy funding, to use levy funding in the largest capacity possible while still ensuring that they continue to meet the needs of, like I said, the uninsured and underinsured Hamilton County residents. Any questions?
Thank you. I'll open up for questions. Vice President Treehouse.
Questions.
Commissioner Dumas.
No, no questions.
I do have one comment. I think this is great. Number one, a lot of people don't know, may not know, rather, that Hamilton County, we are a large through the tax levy, indigent tax levy, we are a major provider of, in the healthcare space, so that no one's turned away at the hospital, and we've had a good partnership with UC Health. We also understand that post-COVID, or though COVID's still around, economically, it has been challenging, and with the new Medicaid drawdown rules, et cetera, this gives us an opportunity for them to partner and expand with the levy dollars and expand with federal dollars to try to help, help them not only stay afloat but continue to provide these services, which I think is important, and I want to do, I want to thank the state legislature because they had to change the law to do this for us to be able to consider it. But I also want to highlight that we also want to be cognizant of those who are providing health care in that area. We have only one African-American doctor left in the Avondale area now, and I know when everything started going, when the city sold the hospital and all those things, and so many agreements that we forget about when we get going because new people come in, et cetera, and one of it, one of them was we were going to have these African-American doctors, and we were able to help them stay afloat, but also understanding that they've been hit as well with COVID, and we only have one, I believe, in that area. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to keep that doctor who has also dealing with patients post-COVID, who many have lost their Medicaid as we are dealing with, have lost Medicaid, but he is still seeing them, senior citizens, people with disabilities. That's what this is about, to be able to keep health care that helps the whole county, but also in an area that has high poverty as well as lots of issues as it relates to health. So just wanted to say that, and I'm not saying anything I haven't said to them directly. With that, I would move to approve item by leave number three.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
By leave number four is a memorandum of understanding regarding medical care for our Hamilton County inmates within the Justice Center complex. Along with our partnership on the levy with University of Cincinnati Medical Center, we have had a longstanding arrangement related to providing critical inmate health care. The Justice Center and the Sheriff's Office has, have a contract with a medical provider within the Justice Center, but there are issues where there are emergent and specialized medical services that can't be performed within the Justice Center. University of Cincinnati Medical Center has been a wonderful partner in that. Again, longstanding relationship that predates anybody that I have ever spoken with, with the county, but nothing has ever been formalized. This is an MOU that outlines those services and provides kind of a roadmap for University of Cincinnati Medical Center, the sheriff, as well as our medical provider, on what those services are, and holds us a little bit more accountable. We've been having monthly meetings the last two years with all three of those groups coming together, talking about medical services and how we can improve capacity, how things operate between the two systems. This just goes to memorialize that and formalize the arrangement, so we have something moving forward. There's no cost associated with that, they're already providing that services for us.
I'll open up for questions. Vice President Treehouse.
Yep, I just, you know, it's interesting that we've got the second item now on here for UC, MC, and it makes me want to recognize the partnership there and how we depend on them for many things here in this community, to provide for not only indigent care, but now also for inmate services. So UCMC is quite the asset to our community, and so I'm happy to support both of these.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Just a comment, they may lose their freedom, but they don't lose their ability for us to take care of them, and so UC also provides a medication component, are we?
They provide all the services, yes, for anybody that needs those issues. As we reiterate, I'm sure the sheriffs have said this a thousand times, but the Justice Center complex is the largest inpatient medical provider, mental health provider in Hamilton County, so these critical services, and UCMC provides that link for services that go beyond what we can provide within the Justice Center.
Great, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve by leave four.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now to the consent agenda.
Commissioners, I'm just going to walk through these quickly. It's a pretty short consent agenda. Item number seven is budget, is budget adjustment number two this year. It is for a total of $15.39 million for a variety of projects, the vast majority being the engineer projects in Columbia, Anderson, Corrine Sims, Green, Miami and Delhi Townships at $12.1 million. There are also dollars in here for an EMA vehicle purchase and for the advance. There is one Ohio local grants in here, there's also the advance of dollars for tenant improvements and costs at the Findlay Market Garage, which will be reimbursed, most of which will be reimbursed by, through rental income over the lease periods. Item number eight is a resolution authorizing the invitation to bid for the engineer's asphalt bid, $240,000. Resolution number nine is accepting a purchase, purchase orders of the county at $8.8 million. The largest of these in the resolution relates to the purchase order for the DTAC funds to fund the operations of the Hamilton County Land Reutilization Corporation or the Land Bank in 2024. We have a contract with Document Destruction LLC for $125,000 as a result of a competitive bid. We have resolution authorizing credit cards for emergency, the Emergency Management Agency. Job and Family Services is a third renewal of an agreement with Talbert Hou, Talbert House for Ohio Works First Work Participation Services. This is specifically for those individuals required to participate in a work activity as a condition of their benefits eligibility. We have credit cards usage in the Office of Media Engagement, and we also have of note on this particular consent agenda, Commissioners, the resolution approving, authorizing the filing of the 2021 Fiscal Year Annual Action Plan for the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. This relates to the Home ARP Program Amendment that the board heard about in staff meeting, also had a public hearing about, that Maria Collins was here for over the past week. We also have, item number 15 is a, on the travel agenda, is a request of the authorization to travel at the county's expense of one corner employee to Denver, Colorado, two engineer employees to Dublin, Ohio, and five engineer employees to Columbus, Ohio, in your consent agenda, Commissioners.
Yeah, I'll open it up for questions or comments. Vice President Treehouse.
No questions.
Commissioner Dumas.
No questions or comments.
I make a motion to approve items number seven through 15.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
There's no further business. Oh, you have some?
You will permit, permit me, rather, President, I'd like to follow up with item one. There was a question that was asked that I did not have the answer to, but I now have the answers for the purposes of the record. I'd like to amend that, if you don't mind. So much appreciate that.
Okay.
Item one, you had asked the question, I believe, Commissioner Summer Dumas, about the overall balance in the engineer's premise of auto tax funding. So the $75,000, or $75,369.75 expenditure leaves a balance in our fund of $15,808,799.48 for that, so it's a, it's a small piece of the total at this point.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you. I make a motion.
Can I, I just wanted to make a comment. I forgot to say this. The large event grants have been closed, but the small event grants applications are open, and they will close February the 16th at 5:00 PM. So if you're interested in a small event grant, if you want to put in, look on our website, that's all.
Awesome. Anything else? Okay. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.